Oh, good. Let's call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you very much. It's a nice little crowd, good-looking gentleman over there. I like the outfits. I do want to present, before we get moving on here with approving the agenda, I do want to welcome Courtney Johnson and Kristi Mock to the council this evening. They were sworn in at 5:20 today. We had to wait until 5:20 to make it official, and at 5:22, we were completed. So they've taken part in their first special set, or work session, and here we are. So, special welcome, Courtney, Kristi.
Thank you.
Let's move on. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to, well, we get some fun stuff. This is the fun stuff. So we have a award, a award?
An award.
An award to present. Every year we have a historic district award, and the property winning the Heritage Preservation Award this year is St. Nicholas Catholic Church. Before we clap, I, Brent, Mr. Merrick, Mark, do either one of you have the sheet that explains the heritage preservation? It's right here. There we go. I'm gonna read this very quickly. Thank you for that. I have to make this a little bit there. This is a really prestigious award, and the previous properties in the past have taken great pride and presented this very, very prominently in their structure. So the recipient of the 2016 Carver Heritage Preservation Award is St. Nicholas Church, located at 412 Fourth Street West in downtown Carver. It's actually right on top of the hill. Beautiful property. The award is given annually for the year's best preservation work within the Carver Historic District, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. I feel like I'm presenting the plaque by my head. The church was originally constructed in 1868 under the direction of Father Magnus Mar. Did I get that right? Nice. "In a rural European Gothic revival study with a trace of Greek revival elements." I did not write that. I could not come up with that. That's outstanding. "It features Gothic arched windows and a three-story shingled bell tower. Inside the altar area occupies a half- it's a gonal, easy for me to say, extension to the east, and stained glass windows surround the church." During November, December, nominations were solicited from Carver residents, and at the December meeting of the Carver Heritage Preservation Commission, the 2016 nominations were reviewed, and the commission selected the year's best preservation work or contribution to the Carver Historic District. St. Nicholas's restoration projects included replacing the aging roof with architectural shingles, cleaning the exterior brick, and tuck pointing the brickwork with appropriate and color correct mortar. Interior work was also completed that involved replacing failing roof trusses, plastering, repainting, woodworking, and reframing the ornate stained glass window. A large landscape prayer garden, which was written up in the Chaska Herald, Mr. Mason. Landscape park garden was also added to the northeast of the church and was consecrated on September 10, 2016. The St. Nicholas Church Board and parishioners moved forward at great cost and effort to complete these projects that have added to the beauty of the church and more importantly, the Carver Historic District. So on behalf of the city, I'd like to have Tony Lotzer, I got that right?
Right.
And Jody Corkowski, please, and it's EE. Please come on up. Let's get some pictures, and I'd love to present this award to you guys. Let's go right around. Thank you for having that up. Alright, that's fun. There you go. Nick, we'll get in there. Your chiefness, Mr. Meyer, Carver Fire and Rescue. Give us an update, brother. Said it was a slow season, New Year's.
Yeah, December was pretty quiet. We only had five, six calls for the whole month of December. Then November is actually, the report's off a little bit. There is actually 21 calls for November, so it's actually a pretty busy month in November, so. But anyways, everything's been pretty good. Got some new members that have gone through FF1, FF2, and are just finishing up on the hazmat portion, so they should get their final certificates within the next week or so. So then they'll be going into medical training for the ones that don't have that. And then we have one person that we're waiting for a background check. He's actually a Chaska firefighter, Corey Travatowsky, that were, once the background checks come back, we'll be looking to bring him on also. So he's the one that just moved into our fire district.
Outstanding. Is he, do we have to put him through trainers? He already through it?
No.
He just walks on.
He just walks on. So we'll have to get him some gear. He'll use the Chaska gear for a while until we get some gear for him, so. Otherwise, I brought some of the officers down that have changed positions this year, so I'll start.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yep.
With the addition of the new members, 33 is the target?
Uh, 32.
32, where are we at?
Um, 28, I believe it is, so.
So just for purposes of the camera, we're always looking for new members to the lovely Carver Fire and Rescue.
Yep.
Alright.
As welcome to council members, and then I'll have Callie Trimble, Carver Chief Two, to come up and introduce himself and talk about his years of service and what he plans to do for 2017, and then he'll kind of just pass it down the line.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
You've got big plans for 2017.
My plans for, well, I'm Callie Trimble. I've been on the fire department for 14 years, and actually 15 in January, so. Been on for quite a while, held a whole host of positions throughout my years on the service, mostly in training. So I'm looking forward to being Chief Two and work with the training and development of the new guys along with the current members that we currently have on the department, so.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I know you've been on board a long time, but the interviews were extremely positive, and that, Mr. Walsh was, and Callie both went for Chief Two, and it was an extremely difficult decision with some very, very high-quality people, and we appreciate that. And congratulations to you, and we look forward to serving with you.
Thank you. Tim, your turn.
Thanks, Callie.
It's Mr. Walsh.
Good evening. I'm Tim Walsh. I've been on the department, I think about four years, roughly four years. Been in the fire service almost 30 now.
You don't even look 30 years old.
Thank you. I was a lieutenant last year, the last couple of years, and moved up to Captain One now, and accepted another kind of job duty as a lead person in one of the committees. And that's working with the building and fire apparatus and radios and pagers and those types of things, so. We're working with those and the other firefighters and trying to get some of that stuff put together and do some presentations for the chief so he can bring it to the council so we can get some things done and approved and move on in the fire service, so.
Welcome aboard in your new role, and we do appreciate you putting your name in the hat, and we look forward to that in the future as well.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Siv. Siv. Mr. Payne is a goalie in men's league, that's why I mentioned it.
I'm retired.
Did you?
Yep. Hung up.
So did I.
Jared Payne. I've been a lieutenant for four years, been on the department for about six and a half. My new position is Captain Three, and what I'm gonna do in '17 is continuing education and bring back what I learned at the department and hopefully apply it and help out wherever needed. Yeah.
Outstanding. Welcome aboard in the new position.
Thank you.
It's always good to see familiar faces, that's for sure. I'm gonna guess Mr. Schmitz is next. How you doing, Mark?
Good. Hello, I'm Mark Schmitz. I've been on the department for 11 years now. Previously, I was a captain for three years, I believe it was. My wife and I had two children, so I took a step back for a while. Now that they're out of the infant stage, I am back. I'm Lieutenant Three.
Welcome back.
Thanks.
Still like being a dad?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, alright, just making sure.
Absolutely.
Trying to get away a little bit.
No, no. It was a decision that was made with my wife, so she fully supports it.
Alright, good. That's good. We won't get phone calls.
Right. We're good.
Cause I'm more afraid of her than I am of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard, you guys, and always great work.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Sarge? You guys look sharp, too, by the way. I like those outfits. Need one of those jackets. Sarge?
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hey, this is your first one, isn't it?
This is number one.
Nice. Welcome aboard, brother.
Thanks. How does this go?
Talk to us. It's usually good if you have a joke right away.
I'm out. But it's been a good couple of months since I have taken over for Corporal Gowen. I think we've kind of jumped in and got some stuff taken care of or in the process of getting some things taken care of. We moved a couple of vehicles. We've had some problem spots kind of cleared. We still have got some areas that we're looking to concentrate on, but I think it's been good. December was slow for us as well, just with the snows and the cold and the holidays. We tend to just scale down a little bit, our overall enforcement. Looking to step that back up in January. You know, other than, I don't know any other big things, I'm looking forward to myself and Deputy Bajowski, you know, looking forward to actually, you know, identifying some concerns or some trouble areas, trouble issues, and being able to come up with a cooperative solution to those that includes business owners or whatever needs to be to just make our presence felt, make people comfortable in the downtown area, whether they're here partaking at the bars or shopping during the day. One of the things that I was just talking with my sergeant about is to incorporate kind of a foot patrol during the spring and summertime and actually walk the businesses downtown and just really get to know. That's kind of my strong suit, is I'm a people guy. I enjoy conversing with people and getting to know them and building that, that relationship of a business owner and law enforcement and get out there and maybe organize or get involved in some events or whatever it takes just to connect those pieces a little better. We spend a lot of time at Fleet Farm. Not shopping, nope. Dealing with people who don't want to pay for their shopping. So that's always a pretty high-volume requirement.
Well, I've had the opportunity to work alongside, at least head down at City Hall, and you have big shoes to fill. Greg had a great relationship with the people in our community and did a phenomenal job, and so far, so good. Keep up the good work. Are you getting everything that you need from the city?
Yeah, yeah. No, it's been good. It's been great, great working environment, and there really isn't anything that I can think of. It'll be good to look at the new year and see what things we can.
Outstanding.
Put in.
Thank you, my friend. Be safe out there.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, too.
Alright, we don't have any public hearings. Could I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda, approve the consent agenda.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to number eight, unfinished business. We have none, number nine, our new business. First meeting of every January, we go through our Resolution 101-17 for our organizational structure, and I'm gonna start this off by, we don't do a single motion. We make a recommendation and then do a motion at the end, correct?
Correct. You do one motion at the end.
Okay. I'm gonna make the recommendation that Cindy Monroe continues as the acting mayor.
I will second that.
Vicki, are you gonna keep a tally? Alright. Who would like to be the liaison, city council liaison to the Heritage Preservation Commission?
I would like to. Very good.
I am gonna guess that nobody's gonna argue with you. I think we have Kristi Mock as HPC liaison. Moving on to Parks Commission, currently is Cynthia Monroe. Would you like to continue?
No, I'm not on Parks Commission.
Oh, you are. I apologize, Hank. Oh, man.
It's alright. I apologize. But I'd love to stay on the commission.
Yeah, I think he should.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for Glenn Henry to stay as the Parks Commission.
Well, we're not making motions. We're making recommendations. See there?
I would like to recommend.
We're gonna have to suck the layer here. Alright, then we are on to Planning Commission.
I'm gonna be on Planning Commission.
Sure.
I'd like to make Courtney here to be on Planning Commission.
I thought that was gonna be our only fight.
No, we don't fight here. We discuss.
Open debate amongst respectful and kind people. Wow. Courtney, Planning Commission.
I want to be on Carver County Leaders again.
On Carver County Leaders, I, oh, it's being updated as, oh, is that cool? How cool is that? Carver County Leaders, I have no problem with that.
Great.
Does anybody?
I think that's awesome.
Outstanding. The Southwest Transit Board, I am currently on that. Would like to continue on that. If anyone else would like to do that, we can have a discussion. I think that's unanimous. Southwest Transportation Alliance, I am currently on that. And Brent does attend with me. Think it would make sense to keep that continuity.
Want a motion?
Nope. Just a recommendation unless anybody.
I would love to stay on that.
Okay. The Township Fire Board, I have been on that, and, sure, sure.
So is it correct then that we do have two of council members that go to that?
You're correct.
And then how many times a year, month, do they meet?
It was twice a year.
About twice a year.
Twice a year. When do they meet?
It's rotating. It's, you'll typically find one in maybe March or April, and then another one in August. They do meet more on occasion if there's something new to the department, so. For example, the Township Fire contracts, but those have just been renewed for another five years if there was a major capital purchase, like a fire engine or some type of building issue. But typically, it's gonna be twice a year, probably around 5 o'clock in the afternoon for about an hour.
I'd like to throw my name in the hat for that one. Yeah, I'd be interested in that, too.
Bingo.
That sounds good.
Perfect. Outstanding. No arguments? Klein? Alright. Fire Relief Trustees, that is Brent and I. 112 Community Leaders is me. Land Use Advisory Committee, that is with the Metropolitan Council. I am appointed to that. Regional Council Mayor is me. City Attorney, Mr. Harris. I think we should take some discussion about the official newspaper. Alright, we're good with the Herald. Alright, now, just to make sure, we have Councilmember Monroe, Acting Mayor, HPC, Councilmember Mock, Parks Commission, Councilmember Hank, Planning Commission, Councilmember Johnson, Carver County Leaders, Councilmember Monroe, Southwest Transit Board, myself, Southwest Transportation Alliance, myself, and Township Fire Board, Councilmember Johnson, and Councilmember Mock. We have Fire Relief Trustees, Mike Webb, Brent Merrick, District 112, Mike Webb, Land Use Advisory Committee with the Met Council, Mike Webb, Regional Council Mayor is Mike Webb, City Attorney, Larry Harris, and Official Newspaper, Chaska Herald.
I'll make a motion and we adopt Resolution 101-17 as presented here on our screen.
I'll second that.
Alright, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I would like to add that it further be resolved that Klein Bank shall be the city's official depository in 2017. City investments can be made at Northland Securities and Stifle Nicholas and Company Incorporated. Want to make sure that we added that. You're welcome, Mr. Harris. There's a motion, there's a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That was a lot easier than it has been in some previous years. Let us move on to, wow, Ms. Nash. Welcome aboard. You've been through, this is the longest that you've been quiet. An entire meeting and almost another entire meeting. So, 9.2 Concept Plan with the Hartman Communities.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is a concept plan, as you said, for the Hartman Communities project. This is something that we've commonly called the Olson Property. It's located on the west side of County Road 11, north of Dahlgren Road, and south of Copper Hills and Carver Crossing. On the concept plan that's before you, they're showing 146 single-family homes, 22 twin homes, and 67 townhome units. What would actually come in with the preliminary plat may vary from that, either up or down, and also in terms of type of units actually proposed, because they are still working with different builders and talking to them and trying to figure out what the right product mix is for the development. But the purpose of the concept plan is to kind of look at it as at a high level of planning and look at the general layout, how it's connecting to different parcels of land next to it, just generally where the access to the site will come from and things like that. They are showing a few different road connections to the site. They're showing one generally at White Pine Way and County Road 11. That, how that intersection ends up being configured is something that we'll be reviewing later when they do a traffic impact analysis. And that traffic impact analysis will provide the city and the county with much-needed information to determine what that intersection actually looks like in terms of how it's configured and what kind of traffic control would be there. They're also providing an extension of Hartwell Drive from the north going into their property, and for a portion of it, that is shown as a minor collector. Another, the other north-south road in Copper Hills is also being extended into the plat, and then they're showing one that's going to the west, White Pine Way, again, it's going to the west into the Finkel property. You'll see in our recommendations that we're recommending that we do need a connection down to Dahlgren Road somewhere, and we'd like them to look at trying to figure out a way to accommodate that within the project as well. There are some small bluffs and ravines in the project. It's sort of that open area on the southeastern side of the plans, and that's proposed right now to be preserved. And one of our comments was that the trail that they would need to have that would generally connect to the trail section that the city just constructed to the underpass could, rather than going adjacent to 11 in this section, could actually move inward and then go down that bluff ravine section instead for some interest. And with that, I think I've covered everything I wanted to chat about, but Terry Hartman with Hartman Communities is here as well this evening if you have any questions for him.
How you doing, Terry? I was at the meeting, the Planning Commission meeting. I think they covered everything, and obviously, we're at a concept plan. This is all gonna change, I get that. The one thing that was mentioned was hopefully a walkable community to the school, and I would just tell you publicly that I'm all for trails, and I think that we should see some trails throughout this, make sure that it's a walkable community. It's important to us, and if you can keep that in mind moving forward, we'd appreciate it. Good. Anyone have anything else? Any questions for Cindy and/or Mr. Hartman?
Cindy, just looking at this, are there sidewalks on both sides of the street?
You know, at a concept level, we typically don't show the sidewalks at this point in time, but city ordinances would require them to be on one side of the street.
On one side, okay.
And did you have any, and just, I know it's just a concept, but is there any preference as to where you would join a street, run a street down into Dahlgren Road?
You know, there's some preferences on where we would do that, but at the same time, there's two different property owners that actually abut Dahlgren Road, and this property doesn't through the majority of the area. So there's also the possibility that we're just looking at providing for the ability to do a future connection to Dahlgren Road, and that's something we'll have to kind of look at, given the topography in the area and what could actually be feasible to make happen.
Cindy, under the staff comments form, under letter D, the last line says that if the development is approved as one planned residential development, so it says if the development, is there something else we're considering? Or is that the if of if council approves this?
It's not meant to be anything else. It's basically if this is approved as one development at one time, because the property's actually split in the future land use map into part of its medium density and part of its low density.
Okay.
So if it's all done at one time, then similar to what we did with the Madamy, the first phase of Copper Hills, the Park and Ride, and the Carver Crossing and apartment area, the density could be blended across the whole plat rather than looked at in individual pieces.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone have any other comments or questions?
Could I entertain a motion to approve the concept plan for Hartman Communities for the Olson Property?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Alright, moving forward. 9.3 Comprehensive Plan, Draft Work Plan, Ms. Nash.
Thank you, we're looking. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're looking for your approval tonight on the planning process and milestones for the comprehensive plan. A copy of that's included in your packet. I'll just kind of go over some high-level information here for any public that may be watching. So we're starting off with the resident engagement strategies that we're proposing to include in the planning process. And it will start out with joint City Council and Planning Commission meetings that are open to the public. And we're proposing that joint meetings of the Council and the Planning Commission sort of drive the process and the review process for this. So those would be scheduled for 5:30 on the third Thursday of every month so that the Planning Commission has just one meeting on their calendar still every month, because this will be an intensive effort through this year. We're also looking at doing, of course, a project page on the city website that's updated frequently with all the latest information that's available, a resident guide summary after each meeting, a few different town hall meetings that are highlighted within the schedule portion of the work plan, and then various social media outreach efforts at different points within the process as well. The timeframes that everything takes, because the Planning Commission has so many openings right now, we're proposing that the meetings start in March rather than January or February yet this year. And the first meeting would focus on sort of a cover snapshot of where we are and who we are and desired outcomes of the planning process. And we would then also have the first town hall meeting in March as well on what the comprehensive plan is and what the process is for getting us, for updating our plan. April, we would look at the guiding strategies, the future land use map, and development staging, which will then, all of that information goes forward and gets used in all of the rest of the planning efforts that both Stan Tech and myself will be going through the rest of the year. In May, we'd continue on with future land use and housing because there would likely be tweaks that have to happen after the first meeting. June, we'd move to economic development. July would be transportation and parks. August would be water, wastewater, and surface water. And then September, October, we would review the preliminary draft of the plan and continue to make any changes that need to be made based on City Council and Planning Commission input. And then in November, have a town, another. a town, another town hall meeting on the draft plan. From there, we would do the actual required public hearing in December of next year and then incorporate your final comments into the plan and then start that six-month adjacent community review process and agency review where we send it out to all of our neighboring communities, MINDA, the DNR and everybody. There's a very long list of folks that have to review this plan.
That's an interesting time.
As those comments start trickling in, probably at the end of June of 2018, and then through about October, we would revise the plan. And then estimated in October of 2018, we would ask the City Council to submit the plan formally to the Metropolitan Council for their review, which again takes a few months. And so then we'd be looking at adoption of the plan in sometime in early 2019. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have on it or we can tweak things if there's something that you'd like to see different.
Okay. For the ways that we're going to be advertising this to the general public, I didn't see on there anything about maybe in the water bill or in our quarterly, if we're putting out the quarterly book still. I would like to see the beginning of the process noted in the water bills and then possibly as we go so that people are aware that it's starting. I do hear from a lot of people that they read it, so we do get information out to people that way.
Yep, I think, I think we have that in one of our sections, but we can get it in there in the front end.
I saw social media, I just didn't say print, or didn't see that it said print media.
One of the things I want to, since I have the mic, want to highlight in Cindy's presentation that we try to do differently here too is if you look at November of 2017 where we have the town hall and the draft plan and then the required public hearing in December, and then again, that's followed by another review of the council. What we're trying to do is kind of sandwich that where typically you go to a public hearing and that's the one shot for residents to kind of have their say. And it kind of artificially kind of raises people's shoulders on like a decision's being made tonight and tonight's the first time I get to comment. And so what we've done is in November, they look at the draft. They can prepare their comments for the public hearing. You have the public hearing. And then instead of making that decision tonight, the council can take all that in and then review and revise that plan as necessary before you send it out rather than doing that, those three steps all in one. So that was a little background on how we got to some of that timing.
And that I think is extremely helpful for those of you, I think, are you and I the only ones that have been through this?
I don't know. I know, I've been through it a couple of times, it seems like.
It's, it's a long, arduous process. And I think that things that you're doing by combining everything else, I think will be good for everyone. So I appreciate that. I would entertain a motion to approve the, does anybody have any questions or comments?
I just had one more question.
Yep, I can tell. Sorry.
That's okay. So in tonight's work session, we interviewed a few folks from the Planning Commission and we said that those meetings start at 7 o'clock. I wonder if we don't need to go back in that question about, does this work with your schedule that they start at 5:30?
Yeah, we can.
Given this timeline, right?
We can do that.
That was just my only comment.
All right. Now could I entertain a motion to approve the planning profit, process and milestones for the Comprehensive Plan?
So moved.
Get there.
Second.
Nice. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments or concerns? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Harris, you've been awfully patient. Let's move to you on 9.4 for Ordinance 01-2017, City Clerk and City Manager Duties.
Thank you, Council. I'm before you tonight on what is to a certain extent a housecleaning measure. A bit of history, when the city of Carver for a long period of time operated with a city administrator and a city clerk. When Patty Pluckenpool retired, the council made a decision to consolidate the positions of city clerk and city administrator into one position. When the city redid its city code for the first time in 20 years in 2014, the code then became replete with references to the Consolidated Office of City Clerk Administrator. You would read through it and say, "Report to the City Clerk Administrator. The City Clerk Administrator shall do this. The City Clerk Administrator shall, shall do that." Very late in 2015, the council made a decision that it wanted to separate the offices of clerk and administrator and appoint Vicki Sonziden as the city clerk. That triggered in my mind that, okay, on a list of things to do is we've got to go through and unravel all these definitions in the code. But by March of 2016, a few months later, the council was starting to consider the process of moving to a Plan B form of government. And my opinion was this is something that needed to be done, but the cost of doing it and changing the descriptions and then having to change them again if you move to a city manager, I figured, you know, if we ever have an issue with the wording in this eight or nine-month period, I'll figure out how to deal with it so we only have to do it once.
All you do is save us money.
Well, I, it didn't make, it did not make any sense to do it and have to do it again. So before you tonight is a very, very lengthy ordinance which unravels the clerk-administrator references. I can tell you that by a significant margin, most of the delegations in the ordinance as revised fall on Vicki, not Brent.
Go figure.
The, and I will tell you that there, most of them, I view them as administrative. There are some substantive ones relating to fire department because there's some duplication in, the fire department was the only, section of the code was the only place where there are some positions and duties codified where there's, the city has a separate, a separate operating procedure for the fire department. So it didn't seem necessary to have those in place. You should know that there are also some references that need to be corrected in the zoning ordinance, but because the zone, because it is a zoning ordinance, that requires a public hearing and has to go through the Planning Commission first. So you will get another chance to see some procedural changes. I think it's also important that the council knows that in terms of seeing these in the online version of the code, I'm not sure exactly when that will happen. Vicki makes a conscious budgetary decision every year about when to submit to MUNICode. MUNICode charges a fee for updating the code. So if you go online and look, you'll see the code and then you'll see sort of a list of ordinances that haven't been codified yet. It's because they stack up for a year or so because it's more cost-effective to do it that way. But ultimately, these changes will all get merged into the code, but they become effective upon adoption and publication. If there are any questions about the ordinance, I'm here to answer them.
They become effective upon approval.
Well, approval and publication.
And publication, but we.
But not codification.
Got it, thank you.
They may not be codified for, I mean Vicki will make a decision as to when, but.
I wanted to make sure I understood that, that's all.
No.
Amazingly self-evident. Does anybody have any questions at all?
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 01-2017, City Clerk and City Manager Duties.
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second. We will open it up to questions or comments. I, thank you both. I couldn't have a bigger trust factor in either one of these positions than having you two in them. I think we're in very good hands for a very long time as long as we can keep Vicki happy with all the extra stuff she has to do now. All right, any other comments or questions? There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Harris. We are now to, oh, right back to you, Mr. Harris. Give us a little update on the annexation because that will or will not affect the Hartman Property.
I will give you a very high-level update.
Thank you.
This is noted as a public meeting. Obviously, the city is in litigation. There could have been a decision to go to a closed session, but the, Mr. Merrick's direction to me was to make us a very high-level review particularly because there's two new council members. The city is involved in an appeal of a decision of the Chief Administrative Law Judge in relation to what is commonly known in Carver as the Dental Parcel. The chief, all orderly annexations in Minnesota are processed by a resolution adopted by a city which is a party to an orderly annexation agreement and then submitted to what's known as the OAH, the Office of Administrative Hearings, which has statutory review over annexation matters. There has been a significant amount of activity in the last couple of years with issues with OAH approving annexations particularly because of the fee that is paid to the township either by the city, the property owner or some third party as part of that annexation. A couple of significant projects have been delayed because of that.
Such as?
Well, the, the primary one and the one that was hit the hardest was the new high school in Waconia, which incurred substantial delays. This, as the council is aware, that's one of the reasons for the Carver Elementary Site that we made sure that the city acquired title to the parcel before the city moved forward with the annexation because there's a provision in the city's annexation or, orderly annexation agreement with the township that tax-exempt property is not subject to the fee. So we were able to get that through. That involved some structuring to get to that point. Although the Dental Parcel was ultimately annexed, and I won't go through the entire procedural history, the order makes some relatively onerous findings and conclusions about annexation. Three particularly that the city has some issues with. One, that is a matter of contract. A city and a township cannot contract for the payment of a fee for reimbursement for annexation. Secondly, that the township by contract can't impose a fee. And third, OAH basically took its cost for reviewing this matter, treated it as though it was a contested case matter. It wasn't a contested case matter, it was stipulated to between the city and the township and said the city, the township had to pay the fees. And so that's also part of the appeal. The first step in the appeal process has been a briefing schedule. It goes to a hearing in front of a Carver County District Court Judge at 1 o'clock next Tuesday at the courthouse in Chaska. All are welcome to attend.
Who's the judge?
Don't know yet. In the First Judicial District, cases are not necessarily assigned to a single judge. Some of the more high-profile cases, the Prince Estate was assigned to Judge Idy, but generally there's not a block assignment. I'll know Tuesday morning who it will be. There will be an opportunity.
Be a week from today.
A week from today at 1:00 PM. Oral argument will be given by, on behalf of the Chief Administrative Law Judge, Dahlgren Township and the city. We will, in due course, within 90 days thereafter, get a decision from a Carver County District Court Judge on this matter. Depending on the results of that decision, it may well go to the Minnesota Court of Appeals. Candidly, in my opinion, I would like to see this matter go to the Minnesota Court of Appeals to get a definitive ruling on what can and can't happen between cities and townships on annexation. This is a monetary issue to the township. It's a process and procedure issue to the city. The city's big concern here is we need to know what the rules are. We need to be comfortable and confident in the rules. We need to be able to tell property owners how it works and what the process is. And we don't want orderly development delayed. That's really why the city, the main laboring oar in this appeal is the township because they have the financial interests. The city is going along in the appeal, not, the township has other issues that we are not appealing. The city is going along in the appeal because we want a, we want a court order, hopefully an appellate court order that gives certainty to the process and says this is how it works. The council should also know that the city continues to be in dialogue with the township in terms of trying to develop means and methods to facilitate annexation. There was a very productive discussion this afternoon between Mark Willams of the township, Bob Rupe, the township's attorney, Mr. Merrick and myself. I want you to know we're working hard to try and make sure that annexations can move smoothly. But because of the position that OAH has taken on annexations, and this is not just annexations in Carver or Carver County, there's some uncertainty of the process and we're trying to do everything we can to move it forward and smooth it out for the city. I'm willing to ask questions. I don't really want to get into questions on strategy and tactics though because we are in litigation and this is a public meeting.
What's our strategy?
I just.
You knew as soon as you said that I was gonna ask that. All right. Well, thank you for the update. Does anybody have any questions at a really high level that we can ask publicly? Thank you for the update, Mr. Harris. Mr. Merrick, Kasah 11 Corridor Study, RFP.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In your packet is a request for proposal that Carver County Highway is putting out regarding the corridor study on County Road 11. Just wanted to point out a few brief things. One, once the council, or once the county gets those proposals, they'll be reviewed by Dan and Brian and myself. And in order for the city council to, or the city to move forward, the city council would have to adopt a joint powers agreement with Carver County, which the city attorney would review. But as far as review process, the county gave us an opportunity to take a look at it. We asked for a couple more public open houses. And then we also asked that the engineering firm selected, that they present a draft study to the city council prior to the open house and then a final study after everything is done to the city council. And they'll be doing that for the county board as well. So there's a lot in the document. But again, this is just the proposal. They'll be getting proposals from engineering firms, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
What is our estimated cost agreement on this for the study?
So we, that would be part of the joint powers agreement.
Yep.
In the 2017 budget, I think we put away $25,000, but we're anticipating that we will have to do that over the course of the next two years as well. So up to $75,000, but that number hasn't been established and will be defined once the proposals are taken. It'll be one of the considerations that the council may have in moving forward as well.
So just so that we have it upfront, that we're estimating that this would cost $75,000. The county's gonna front the number so that the study can get done with the agreement that we have a couple of years to pay them back.
Correct.
Thank you. All right. Looks good. December 27th is when we are, sorry, January 27th is when the proposals are due. When will the decision be made on the proposal itself, on which one to, do we know?
We don't.
Okay. Outstanding. That might affect Mr. Hartman. I'd suggest contacting the county. All right. We are moving on to updates. Ms. Monroe.
I don't have anything, by the way.
You see, it says 10.2 Kasah 11 Corridor Study, update only, and then to adjournment. So I always ask if we have any other council communications, which is why I go Monroe.
I have nothing.
All right. Johnson?
I have nothing.
Mock?
I do. Brian, this is a question for you. I did have a few different people who approached me over the winter break and were wondering why the warming house wasn't open, when it was gonna open, things like that. And I understand with the weather, when it's hovering around, you know, 35 degrees, that we're not gonna be able to make great ice. But do you have a plan set up for when you'll be open or what your staffing will be like out there for the winter?
Yep. Yeah, the wrinkle actually be open tomorrow. So we've had staff out there now Monday and Tuesday flooding. So we did get the proper coverage over it so we can get the Zamboni on it tomorrow. So it'll be open tomorrow. And we'll be open the normal hours till 10 o'clock at night.
Are you gonna post that online so that people can see the hours when they're, when it's open?
Yep. As soon as it's open, Vicki, I'll let her know and then we'll, we'll make sure it's posted. So we did have some vandalism in the warming house and it is one of the reasons why the warming house hasn't been open right away either, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. There was, there was like 100 people on that thing when it was half the ice.
Yeah.
It was awesome. Hank?
Nothing.
I got nothing either. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. You like that, Terry? Dave McCourney made that for me.